For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Card rolty.
Johnson, here.
Nielsen, here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Waldorah?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll have a chance to read the regular session minutes from August 4th, 2014. Any issues? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Rich, I'm your city engineer. At the last council meeting, council was made aware of the development of the Holiday Express at the corner of River and Third Avenue. Along with that, discussions of converting River Street, or excuse me, Third Avenue between River and Chisen, two-way to one-way. Originally, we were looking at a target timeline of next spring to make that changes. As it turns out, depending on their construction schedule and yard appropriate access for their construction equipment, we may want to accelerate that schedule. As such, what we'd like to do is present that at the next council meeting for public discussion and hold a public hearing, basically notify those property owners along and adjacent to there that we are looking at making these changes. And that way, we can get their input, get their comments. And if we, if and when, I should say when, not if, we make this change, we are going to have to publicize it heavily, really get that word out there because it is going to be a major change in traffic flow patterns, and we certainly don't want any accidents out there. So what we'd like to do is in our next council meeting, have that public hearing, and we will get that notified and notice this out to the appropriate property owners there. So if that's council's desire, we will make that happen.
Makes sense.
I see why not.
We'll also put a general notice of public hearing in the paper, like we would for any other.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Anyone else? On the consent agenda, bills to be allowed in the amount of $155,862.97. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Good announcements or proclamations. We'll go down to report of officers. We have bids for ambulance first. Chief.
Good evening. Well, this has been a long road. Should've been a pretty straightforward purchase, but hasn't been. Lieutenant Tim Slosser did an awful lot of the work on this, and I certainly want to recognize him for his effort in the specs and evaluating them and so forth. On April 1st, we put the ambulance out to bid, and they all came back too high. We only have 150. We have to have the radio and a cot in it by contract. If you had a radio and a cot, we couldn't buy it for 150, so we rejected all bid. Put it back out to bid with simplified specs because the bidders said if the specs weren't so picky, if they were a little more general, then they could've done it. So we put it back out to bid, and they were all still too high on May 20th. So then we were stuck in a conundrum because if we bid it again, everybody knew everybody else's bid price, so it really wasn't fair anymore. And so we checked with Bill Pfeifer, and we checked with Roz, our lead mechanic at DPW, who does a wonderful job as their diesel mechanic, and decided to try and go gas instead because gas is cheaper than diesel. And we've always had diesels. The only reason is because it's cheaper, and we only have so much money in the budget. And so Roz said, "That's a good idea. He has no problem with it." Bill said he had no problem with doing it that way. And so we contacted the bidders and asked them the gas price on the same truck. It's a gas truck instead of diesel truck, and they gave us those prices. We looked at that, and the lowest bidder was Michigan First Response at $127,924, but they didn't meet the spec in several key areas. And if you actually added the cost to it, so they did meet the spec, they were then no longer not, then with the lowest bid anymore. The second lowest bid that does meet all the specs is RSVP for an American Emergency Vehicle brand ambulance at $134.95, and we're requesting council to award the bid to RSVP. It'll take about six months to get the bid. We'll be buying another one in 2016, and all of the cost of this will be reimbursed under the county ambulance contract.
Chief, what is the average lifespan of an ambulance when you make a purchase like that? How many years are you getting out of them currently?
It depends on the use. We have an awful lot of use here because our service area is so large, and they put a lot of miles on it. I'd say 10 years on the outside anymore. We used to get a little bit more before we were quite so busy, but probably 10 years. We'd like to see them gone in eight or so, the lifespan that we're doing now.
And do we have a use for the old ambulances ourselves, or what becomes of that when we get the new one in?
No, the new ambulances that are purchased, with the exception of the mobile intensive care unit and the one old transfer rig, reserve rig, that are city-owned, the rest of the ambulance fleet are all owned by the county. We'll award the bid for this. The city will buy it. The county will then reimburse us for it, so it's the county's truck.
Okay.
When we're done with it, it goes to a first responder unit in one of the surrounding township communities, and it lives on until it falls apart there.
Okay. All right. So after us, this doesn't need approval process from anyone else?
Nope, just you.
You want to go? Go ahead.
Apparently, none of us want to. I move we approve the ambulance purchase as presented.
Second.
Karen, a question on that. Did you need a motion? Part of that motion would be for us to disqualify the low bid? No? Okay. Did you have something else?
Thank you.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Public Safety Facility Boiler Upgrade.
On August 12th, 2014, the city received a notice from Public Safety Facility Boiler Upgrade Project. This is just the first step in the process. We will be doing additional work and bidding additional work out, but because of the lead time on the boilers, we pushed to get these out to bid so we could get them ordered and get the contractor onboard to have them in time before the heating season hits us. Bid documents were sent to about 17 firms and posted on the city's website with two bids received as follows. Wyankoff Plumbing and Heating for $70,425, and Laishaw Plumbing and Heating for $75,706. Once we received these bids, we forwarded to the consultant we're using to design this. He reviewed them, and it occurred to award the upgrade project to Wyankoff Plumbing and Heating for the as-bid amount of $70,425. And this is not a budgeted project per se. We have the Public Safety Construction Fund that we are going to be using to pay for these upgrades and these improvements to the facility, so the funding will come out of there for the project. The consultant originally estimated these at about $85,000, so we're about $15,000 under where he anticipated we would be with this.
Rich, once we're done with this project, won't that pretty much drain the public safety building fund?
Depends on, depends on our next two, next phase. If, the next one we anticipate probably be in $150,000, so there should, with that and this, we would still have, I think there's about $330,000.
There's approximately.
In there. So we'll be down to about 200, we'll spend about $200,000, so that'll be about $130,000 in there.
And probably the first thing we should do is approve the use of that money. Usually, we just use the interest, but now we've had to go into the meat of the fund, which is what it was there for.
So you have this, and this takes care, this takes care of the boiler issue that we've been discussing for quite a while, the two boilers, and then you have, the other project is the roof and ceiling issue?
The next in process, Todd Britton will be doing that, and he's been out there inspecting, and he's going to be getting his recommendation. He doesn't think it's, is, that we can solve the problems much more economically than what we originally. Doesn't think we're going to have to replace the entire roof there, et cetera. The next phase of the heating, HVAC work will be control system in there, which is pretty pricey, about $100,000, and then some of the other efficiency upgrades that go along with this to help improve the operations at the facility.
Okay.
Karen, can we roll that into one motion, or you need to?
Yeah. Well, could you, I mean, first of all, we need your approval to use the construction fund money.
The principal.
Yeah, for the upgrades, and then we won't ever, we won't have to do that again as he goes into the control units. So could we do that as one motion, and then the bid as a second?
I move we approve usage of the Public Safety Facility Construction Fund.
I second that. Is there any issue with that, or any major question or concern with using that now? I mean, I understand, I understand it, but...
It was, it was set up with additional funding that was left over from the facilities, when the facility was built. It's been set up, it's been set up so that you were supposed to just use the interest off of it for these improvements, and we've done that for about 20 years. I know we did dip into it once for some improvements, yeah, the old Print Plus building, but for the most part, we've survived being able to use that. Well, we're not getting a lot of interest, so it doesn't take much to burn that up. But this, it was set up for this so that if we did have a major upgrade, a major improvement that needed to be done, that we would have that funding available. We wouldn't be having to go out and borrow the money or eliminate other projects, and we'll make it happen. And we've done, we've done the same thing with our Public Works Facility. We have a reserve funding that's set up to do that for future improvements.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else? When you're ready.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldorah?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I move we approve the Public Safety Facility Boiler Upgrade to Wyankoff Plumbing and Heating.
Second.
Waldorah? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Communications and petitions. This evening, we have two. First up, we have redevelopment-ready communities program presentation by Michigan Environmental Development Corporation staff.
For Adam.
Today, I have the privilege of, we have some guests from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Dan Leonard and Jennifer Rook, and they'll be talking to you a little bit about the redevelopment-ready communities program. Prior to that, I'll just give you a little bit of an intro as far as whether you're from a city standpoint, and then Jennifer will delve into it more. So basically, I'm just going to shorten it. The RRC program, the no-cost program designed by the MEDC to assist local municipalities in establishing a sound foundation for redevelopment and investment to occur in their communities. It measures and certifies communities that integrate transparency, predictability, and efficiency into their daily development processes. One of the goals that city staff and our partner organizations such as Target Alpena has is been to encourage existing development and attract new investment in the City of Alpena. To that end, staff, city staff and Target staff has consistently evaluated our methods of making our community more business-friendly. The RRC program is a tool created by the MEDC to evaluate the entire process and show us where we can improve by utilizing a number of best practice guidelines created by public and private sector experts. Many of the required best practices are practices that Alpena has made standard operating procedures for years, practices such as adopting and regularly updating comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and capital improvement plan. And ours are maintained and easily available to the public, but other practices that we do can be better implemented or can be made easier to access for the public, and this program allows us to analyze the entire system at once. In addition to the obvious benefits of utilizing these best practices to become more business-friendly, the MEDC has offered to provide a site development feasibility study for one of our downtown sites. The study would provide an opportunity to take a, take a priority development site in our downtown and have a fairly detailed feasibility analysis to be used for marketing the site in question. Also, the RRC certification, when it is complete, the MEDC will help us actively market several sites within the city using their national, international connections. There is no cost associated with the program, save for the staff time to align ourselves with the best practices guide, which aligns with the goals of city staff as well as Target Alpena. Overall, participation in this program would be, would bring a welcome new perspective to our development practices, as well as tangible solutions to create better development processes. Would that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer. Does she want to take it away?
Good evening. Thanks, Adam. I think you just gave our whole thing.
Yeah, we're down.
That was pretty thorough. As Adam said, I'm Jennifer Rook, trained with Michigan Economic Development Corporation. I was first introduced to Alpena about four years ago. I came into the MEDC through the Community Development Block Grant Program and actually monitored some of the grants that were going on at the time. So we're just going to, this is the kickoff, and as Adam said, this is a statewide technical assistance program. We took ownership of this program. We actively purchased this with the assistance of MISTHA back in late 2011 from the Michigan Suburbs Alliance down in southeast Michigan. But really, the purpose of this program is about looking at your planning, zoning, and development practices, and are you really achieving the results that you want from those? Are those plans really the vision? Are your regulations really regulating to get you to that vision? And you can think of it a little bit of succession planning. If someone were to leave or retire, can business continue as usual, or is there going to be a kickoff, you know, a missing link in the chain? All of a sudden, you need to stop, and what was that person doing? Was it all in their head? So we focus a lot on internal processes and documentation of that. Brief, brief history. This program really came out of under Governor Grant home back in 2003. She had a land use leadership council. That large report they put together had a specific recommendation in it that said for the public and private sector to come together and put together a set of standards where, when it came to development, both sides could find value, the public and the private sector. And at the time, this was really about all the greenfield and sprawl development that was going on in our brownfields that were just being abandoned and sitting there, and how did we start to entice more development on those already-used areas. This is a quick overview of the process. I know that's a little hard to see, but step one, we had an open application round where any community in the state could apply to formally engage with the process. This was our second round. This was the first time Alpena applied. We had over 65 communities ask for access to our application. We took the top-scoring 17 communities, so like I said, it was a competitive scoring round, so you're already doing some great things, because that's why you scored so well, and I'm here today with Dan. And, but I will tell you, I haven't looked at any of your information, so any, if you tell any stories, or it's not based on anything with Alpena, it's on the other communities. We are formally engaged with 31 communities now, and really, the first step now is this kickoff. So someone here saw value in the program, applied, but we want to make sure that this council is also bought in and wants to proceed and seize value in the program. After this presentation, there's a memorandum of understanding that needs to be signed, and an authorizing resolution of support to proceed with the evaluation. These are kind of buying and check-in points. I mean, as I said, we had 65 communities this last round. We had over 40 the first round. We have quite a pipeline of communities that want to engage in this process, and so we want to make sure the communities are really in, it's just not another state program that they applied for. We go through all of your planning, zoning, and development plans, regulations, procedures, all kinds of things, how you market your community. We look at your website for the ease of locating information and how it's interconnected. I heard you mention Target Alpena a couple times, so if Target Alpena has a website, how are, how are your websites interacting and linking to each other? We put together a report of findings based off of our evaluation, which really, we're measuring you to the six best practices. I believe you all have a copy of those best practices, and so that's, the criteria are what they are. We have expectations that we're looking at, but it's really on you, for the city, to demonstrate to us how you are accomplishing those criteria. We are not about telling you, "You have to be this type of community, or you have to do it this way." It's just the criteria it is. You demonstrate or show us how you're meeting it. Some of the criteria are as simple as, are you in compliance with state laws, though? Because we have limited dollars, decision budgets are shrinking, and why should we be funding things in communities that aren't in compliance with state laws when it comes to planning and zoning? So some of them are very simple like that. After we report out on your evaluation, we have quarterly progress reports to see where your progress is. Right now, we haven't had a community that we've evaluated that's been all green. Not to say that that's not going to happen in the future, but there has been some yellow and red areas, which I'll explain in just a minute. So we do those quarterly progress reports until you are achieving all the best practice criteria, and then you're certified. We'll have a big event. We're actually getting ready in September. We have our first two certifications coming up, and certification is good for three years. The memorandum of understanding, it's really just detailing out what you can expect from us and what we expect from you. Having a point of contact, which has been Adam so far, completing the pre-evaluation, just thus giving us all your documentation. We're actually hoping you provide us with a lot of links to, this stuff is already on your website. Attending the RRC best practice trainings, Adam already has engaged in some of those trainings, and we're getting ready to roll them back out, but being a community that's participating, we will offer free registration to council, your boards, your commissions, so Adam will have a code for those registrations if anybody would like to engage in those. And then we're expecting Adam, if he continues to be the point of contact, which he's been doing a great job so far, to provide you monthly updates of where you are in the process. So when we come back in three, six months, it's not like, "Oh, yeah, I guess I remember hearing a presentation, you know, a while ago." We found this last round that we actually had some turnover in some of the councils, and so we came back and some people had no idea what we were talking about. But just to keep engaged, these evaluations are going to be happening in the order of the kickoffs. You're the seventh kickoff being done out of the 17 new communities, so it's probably going to be two to three months before we actually start your evaluation. Evaluation will probably take a month, but that also depends on getting information back. One thing we like to do are stakeholder interviews. So we interview developers or business owners who have gone through your development process in the last six, 12 months, because we read your information, we hear from city, how things are going. Now we want to talk to someone who's actually gone through the process, especially if it's someone that was said no to, but you followed your process. That's always a great check as well. And then we ask that you're just reviewing and engaged in those best practices so you understand what you're being measured to. This is just a clip from what your report of findings would look like. Green, you're accomplishing that criteria. Yellow, something small or incremental needs to be updated. Red, something's completely missing and needs to be developed and implemented. And so there is text, but we try to do it graphically so you can easily look and see, assess where you're at. This is our advisory council, made up of public and private sector individuals. We definitely, the MEDC, are not the experts in everything, and so these are folks that are out there pounding the pavement, doing this work from local governments to developers, and you can see we have the Michigan Association Planning, the Michigan Municipale, so some of our other big statewide organizations that are working with communities across the state as well. Dan is going to actually go through and touch upon the six best practices real quick, so you just give you a couple examples of things we're looking at.
Thanks. So to introduce myself, my name is Dan Leonard. I'm the Community Assistance Team Specialist for Regions Two and Three, basically all of northern, lower Michigan. I meet fairly regularly, honestly, with Jen, Adam, and Greg, and we actually just had a nice presentation with our executive director at MEDC last week highlighting the city, so it actually went very well. With that being said, a few of the things that we touched on were the RRC program, and that we were excited to have, you know, Region Three have a player. You are the only one thus far that we're engaged with formally in this process, so it's really good to see. Moving forward, looking at all the best practices, number one is junior plans of public outreach. When we're evaluating the performance of the community, you know, we're just going to dive into all of your existing documents. This is nothing new. You're doing it already in terms of reevaluating your master plans, keeping up to date on your capital improvements plan tonight was a good example, and you guys talking about the actual, you know, ambulance updates, and you kind of budgeted for that, and you knew it was coming. And public participation plan is one thing where we've talked about it from a state level, but it's a way so that the public community understands how a process is going to happen, when a new development's coming to town, or even a new developer's coming to town, so that they understand what they're being meant to. So it kind of works both ways. Best practice two is focused more along zoning regulations. We're going to dive in in terms of the team enhancing with evaluating your zoning code to make certain that what you're advertising in the master plan in terms of goals and objectives are actually attainable in your zoning code. A lot of communities you go to, they'll talk about mixed use or, you know, having required heights, but when you go to the master plan, they cancel each other out, you know, they'll suggest it, but then when you go to the zoning code, you'll find out the building inspector is not going to allow that type of use to happen. So it's really a kind of a good check and balance between those two to make me certain everything is tied together. Another big one with best practice three is the development review process. This is a great indication in terms of as someone that's coming to your community, or someone that's gone through the processes we have talked about, what was their experience like? What can you do to either make the experience easier for the development team, or even more so transparent for the community involved? So we're going to evaluate how you work with, you know, I know you have the hotel that's coming online, or at least was proposed recently, you know, how does that whole experience play out, both publicly and from the private side, and maybe what are some areas we can massage or make cleaner for both sides so that you get the product you're looking for, and they understand what you're looking for before you can get there. You've talked about this a little bit, but to go into it a bit farther with the review process, for instance, as someone coming in to pitch a project, they want to know, you know, for instance, "Who do I even report to? I've got a good idea, I've got a site plan in place, but where do I bring that? Do I go to the engineering team? Do I go to the planning staff? Do I go right to Greg? Where do we go?" That being said, again, it's kind of then moving through the process to say, "Okay, you know, what am I exposing myself to? Am I going to jump right in, and is it a public process where anyone's going to weigh in, or am I vetting it through committees?" So on and so forth. And this is, again, just kind of a good streamlined way so that I think everybody both is comfortable with the process, but also is well-informed and helps as well. Best practice four, recruitment and education. Jen touched on this a bit with the turnover she's seen and we've seen in other communities. This is really to try and make certain that everyone is kind of standing abreast with not only, you know, what's going on in your community, but also in the surrounding, in the surrounding communities as well. As I've traveled throughout most of northern Michigan thus far, it's funny, the nuances that each community has. You know, everybody's got kind of their own specialty that they're looking for in terms of projects, or even project elements, and this is a good way through these trainings so that we can bring new ideas to your community that either you can pick up and run with, or maybe you'll bring insight to someone else. And a lot of these education, education programs that we've put on thus far, it's kind of been interesting to see the brainstorming going on with all the different players within all communities that are involved, so, big and small. And a lot of these education, education programs that we've put on thus far, it's kind of been interesting to see the brainstorming going on with all the different players within all communities that are involved. So, big and small, everyone has their own kind of nuance to bring to it. So this is a great way to kind of brainstorm. Best practice five, this is a great incentive, I think, for the community to really be engaged in this process. One of the major focal points of the end goal, and you actually being certified, is that, and we've done this a few times now, is that we will reach out into our development pool, our team of people throughout the state, the Midwest, that we've worked with on deals in the past, and as a, as a way to actually bring some potential capital investment to the community. And what I'm saying is, through this process, the community identifies up to three, you know, primary sites within your downtown that are prime for redevelopment. You'll have some type of an idea as to what it is you want, and we will then market that site, or those sites, to the development world, and host kind of a, you know, developer matchmaking event, where we'll bring people to the community, and it can be that simple. You have a product that you want to see happen, you have the sites that are identified, and you're just looking for that right person to come to town. And this is a great way to host that. And thus far, I think we've seen some good success in bringing folks from all over the state to northern Michigan. We hosted one, boy, not too far ago, or not too long ago, and it was interesting to see the development team say, you have what resources in your backyard? You know, they'd kill to have waterfront, but they're not, you know, having to share with a million other people in such a small, low municipality. And when you see Lake Huron out here, it's just unbelievable. And it's kind of fun to see those other ideas come out of that team as well. And then walking through, this is basically what I just outlined in terms of identifying the sites and what we'll do to move forward with actually marketing those sites. And best practice six, the community prosperity. And this is where we're going to get into, you know, making certain that the community is prepared for the future. The economic development strategy, this is one thing that actually, we had a lot of discussion with Mike Finn and Jim over the course of last week, when we were all here in Alpena touring a bunch of your different sites. We'll make certain that the, the community is working in the right direction, not only with redevelopment-ready sites that you select, but also just in marketing in general, you know, so that you have kind of this ongoing flow of inventory, so that the development world knows it exists. And that you're tying all this to your website, so it's easy for people to find and/or link to other sites to show these opportunities that are out there. But again, this is more so based on, you know, just making it easy for someone to come into your community, both from a marketing standpoint, or even just to know what Alpena's focus is moving forward.
Thanks, Dan. So just to reiterate a couple of things that Dan said, and we do, Adam had mentioned the development feasibility studies, so that's where we've been having a team of U of M students on the guidance of Peter Allen, who is a developer, real estate professor down at U of M for the past 30-plus years. They come in and they take a site that you've identified your downtown, hear what you'd like to do with it, they look at your master plan, and then they're actually going to crunch some numbers and do some preliminary design work and tell you, is it really feasible what you're asking to do? I know you've had a place planned in the past, and so how can we look at that place plan and actually get some actionable projects to come out of that? And so that's another thing our team is going to be diving into. And Dan just touched upon the economic development strategy. We are looking to have communities to have a local ED strategy with identifying your opportunities, and then tying into a bigger regional strategy, especially as those regional prosperity plans are put together and flushed out over the next year or two, and how you can tie to that. But honestly, I couldn't wait for those to happen. We want to make sure the communities are ready and know what their opportunities are, and then how that ties into the region in a bigger, in a bigger way. But ultimately, this is about getting, achieving RRC certification. We do require that you hit all the required criteria. It's an all or nothing. It's not, you know, 75% okay to redevelopment-ready, no. It is an all or nothing. And you're really signaling that you've removed unnecessary steps and barriers to development. And that's not, and we talk a lot about developers, but we're talking about small business owners. We're talking about local residents who want to put a porch, or a deck on, or maybe build a garage. They need to understand and be able to navigate those processes as well. So it's not always just about the big developer coming into town to do some kind of big development. This is about the community as a whole, and all of the residents and stakeholders. We do provide some technical assistance. Depending on where your evaluation shakes out, what the needs of Alpena are, we may have some resources to help you do something. Not knowing, I can't say, okay, we're going to do this. But we do have some resources to assist the communities in accomplishing the criteria that's needed. We also have some guides, and we do have a six-year capital improvements plan, but we're finding a lot of communities don't. So we put a guide together for a community that walks them through doing a six-year CIP, and that they don't have to go out and hire someone. It may take them a little longer, but they don't have to hire someone to do it for them. The public participation plan, that is something we're asking you to put together. It could be as easy as a two-page document, but how you engage the public, that's not required by law, but it is a process that needs to be done and documented, as Dan said, how the public can understand how they're going to be engaged, the different processes, and at what points they're going to be engaged. And then if you try a new technique, and you spend some money on some kind of postcard, and everybody comes, and when they sign in, you ask them how they heard about it, and not one person writes down the postcard, you don't do the postcard again. So it's some of those things as well. Next steps, to sign that memorandum of understanding, adopt the resolution of support to proceed with the evaluation. These both need to be done in the next 30 days. Then submit, Adam, submit all the pre-evaluation information. As I said, review those best practices, so you know what you're being measured against, and engage in the best practice training series if you're able to. Well, you can see that that's a quick map of the communities that were engaged. You can see a little bit higher concentration down in Region 10, and that's because when we purchased this program from the Suburbs Alliance, we grandfathered in some of the communities that they had previously worked with. And all that meant is they didn't actually have to go through the application and process. They get the same evaluation, they have to hit the same requirements as all the other communities across the state.
Just to let the council know that if you are comfortable moving ahead, which, at least from my perspective, I have no problem with doing that, we'll prepare, once we get the MOU, we'll have the resolution at the next council meeting. And then you can approve that, the mayor can sign the MOU, and we'll have Adam send it in, and then we can proceed. I think I'll give a good opportunity. We have a lot of things, but they may not be accessible in the best possible way, even though they're there, whether they're in the zoning ordinance, the comp plan, our CIP, whatever. So this will give us some benchmarks against the best practices, what other communities do, and then if we need to make those adjustments, we will. In going through here, there are a few things that I, we really don't have, or don't have in the proper way, and those will be things that we'll have to work. I think they're all attainable. And between Adam, and then obviously Jim Claridge with Target, other city staff, I'm sure myself, we can make it all happen, and also working with you as the council. And actually, it'll involve all our boards in that, because there's a lot of information that we don't provide as much as we could regarding the roles of our board members, you know, how long they're, you know, they are appointed for, things of this sort, that we can make better. And so we'll probably be engaging all those various boards as well.
I can see a lot of extremely helpful things like, like just that, coming out of it. I guess my only question to staff would be the obvious question as to whether you do have time to devote to this, and apparently I'm going to assume that you do, Adam, or Greg.
You'll make it.
Only because you'd have told me. You probably told me already if you did. It's one of the come-ups.
Yeah, I think we manage it, you know, it's not a process, it's going to happen overnight. It's certainly going to take a lot of time and effort, and, but it's something we continue to work towards, and hopefully we'll get all of our concrete.
And that's why we'll have the quarterly progress reports, as long as we still, you're still actively pursuing, you know, it could take you as long as it takes you. We're not going to say you need to be done in six months or anything like that. As long as you're moving through the process and still proceeding forward, then we're going to be right there with you to help.
And this focuses primarily entirely on the city of Alpena, not the community in a whole, but the city.
No, it's the city as a whole, because we're going to be looking at your planning and zoning documents. Now, when it comes to, you know, pitching projects and coming in for M E D C community development incentives, those are targeted to your downtown. And so, yeah, we do have a little bit more focus on the downtown, because when a project comes in, not with Dan, but the rest of the team too, one of my first questions is, okay, how is this fulfilling a goal or objective in the master plan? How does this tie into the vision of the community? And how is this, say, leveraging private investments for a capital improvement project? How are you, are you tying all those things together? So it is, it is community-wide, but we do definitely look at, the downtown is a priority area.
Right, but I mean, it's still city-wide.
Citywide, yes.
And my emphasis would be on, like on the township, Jim works with township and the county and our surrounding counties, and, you know, will we be, during your study, will we be aware of, you know, our, our neighbor has a zoning ordinance that is completely different than ours, and it's only across the street?
Only if we're made aware of that, we'll, we'll definitely be asking, you know, how do you interact with your, you know, regional partners, and the jurisdictions surrounding you? Over in Region Four, we have a community that works with foreign neighboring jurisdictions, committee process. The only thing that's different is the logo on the application when it comes to electrical, plumbing, HVAC, those standard mechanical increments, so that if a contractor walks into the township, they can still accept their application and their money, and then they can actually scan it over to the neighboring jurisdiction. So we may suggest things like that, if they make sense. But one, we're going to be looking into, how do you already interact with it, and then try to identify opportunities further in that relationship.
Regarding the marketing of sites, do all the sites have to be in the downtown?
No.
Just the one, just the?
The only sites that we will not market are greenfields. We won't market just a green, if it's a greenfield that's been cleared, it's not really a greenfield. If it's something that had a previous use and it's cleared right now.
But it, but there are, it doesn't have to be in the downtown?
No, you have a high priority. We definitely want to see a site within your downtown, but if you have a high priority in a business park or an industrial park, we're going to help market those as well. You know, as you're familiar with the community development tools, we're limited in where we can spend those sometimes, but we can look at our business development, we can look at Mishta, DEQ, some of our partner agencies, what tools they can bring to the table as well. Because Mishta's already declared a priority for funding projects in certified communities. I'm actually meeting with DEQ in a couple of weeks, trying to make them understand why they would also want to give preference or priority to a certified community, knowing that they already have the processes in place. You should have less red tape and hiccups in the approval process moving forward, so.
Do you, you have communities that are already certified and you're marketing for them?
We don't.
You do not?
We have two that are coming up, which I can't say who they are just yet, but a couple, couple more weeks, and we'll be announcing that. I spend a lot of time talking to city councils and commissioners, but I spend a lot of times with developers in the private sector, because, to make sure they understand what it means for a community to achieve this. Because if you achieve it, and the private sector doesn't understand, then what was the point? And so we're really out there, already talking to the development community and financial investment community, so they understand why they want to look at an RRC community, especially if they've never done business before. I'm also working with Smart Growth America. They have a developers group called Locust, and they're looking at doing a west, or a midwest marketplace. And so we would actively participate in that, which wouldn't just be focused on Michigan, but we would definitely be taking Michigan properties there to highlight them.
You mentioned we're the only community in District Three.
Yes.
You know, off the top of your head, how many are in District Two?
We have Traverse City, and we have Manistee.
And Boy.
And Boy, I'm sorry, Boys from the first round. And then up in Region One, we have Esconaba. And then, if you, go back. More in the southern part of the state. So we have a lot of communities that have engaged in the training series, and what we're encouraging them to do, any community can get on our website, we have self-evaluation, and they can start to walk themselves through this process and work on things that they know they need to do. And so hopefully, that will be able to engage more communities that way moving forward. We've looked into trying to certify a region or a county, but because we're looking at the local regulations when it comes to doing development, it's hard to certify a whole region without having done every single municipality within that area. But we're really engaging with the different regional partners, and so that they can help assist, especially if you're using county planning or something for some reason, or committing, or it's one of the COGS, that they are also thinking in this manner, so when they're assisting you, they're looking through a redevelopment that we want as well. And we do say redevelopment, just that's the name of the program, but it's, it's development. The only thing that we are not going to be pushing for is, like I said, is something on a greenfield, where you don't have infrastructure already in place. That's the only thing.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you both.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Look forward to it. Enjoy your stay in Alpena, if you're here for the night.
We're seeing some action on that, if you will.
And I would like to reiterate, when Dan said my opinion, I talked to him today, it was very interesting. He's not going to stay. He's staying.
I don't believe there'll be any action.
No, no, we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
You're doing the first part of the day.
No, with the MOU, both the MOU and the resolution.
Okay, I thought we were going to do the MOU today and the resolution.
No, we're just doing both together.
Excellent.
And then we'll send them out.
Okay, next up is Samuel Prentice, who's here applying to proposal for an erosion Sorry, I think we're set here. Good evening, council. As I was introduced, my name is Sam Prentice, I'm the project manager with Huron Pines. Huron Pines is a natural resources nonprofit conservation organization by the Gaylor, and our service area is all of northeast Michigan, so north from Saginaw Bay, and then Isla by the border, or east of that, over here toward Alpena. We're a nonprofit organization that's been around for more than 40 years, and our mission statement is to conserve the forest lakes and streams of northeast Michigan. And that's what brings me here this evening. We performed a streambank erosion inventory along the Thunder Bay River last year through a partnership with North American Hydro, and actually met with the city of Alpena earlier this year, as one of the identified sites that was within the city limits, also of local folks know it as the Sandies. And so in our inventory, that site was identified as a priority site to control erosion, and Huron Pines has funding in place to implement an erosion control project there. A couple handouts that were put out today, one is a copy of the plans, and then also a newsletter for the organization. We'd like to start work at this site early to mid-September, so do a fairly short timeline here. And then there's a memorandum of understanding that we need signature, and then also a letter of authorization that would have to be presented with the DEQ permit. Taking a look at the erosion control measures that would be put in place, this would be the third, excuse me, the fourth page of the plan. So this is the site right behind the cemetery, and there's actually a couple of different designs that we have put in place. Initially, when we go into an erosion site, and we're talking about controlling that erosion, first of all, we look at what the natural river processes are. So erosion is a natural process, we understand that. Where we do two things, they move water, and they move sediment and other material. So as on an outside bend of the river, you have a natural degrading and erosion on that streambank, but then if you have a connected aquatic system with its streambank, you're going to have, say, another sediment that comes in and deposits in that area, so it's a balance. However, in sites where you have lots of public use, or it's an act- However, in sites where you have lots of public use, or it's an access site, that's what we like to call excessive erosion in the area, so that balance is tipped here. Now, in this kind of situation. So we go to an erosion site that we're trying to control, we're trying to bring that back into balance. And one of the first steps is to control erosion at the toe of the slope. So if you're walking down a hillside or a streambank, right when you get to the water's edge and your approach starts to flatten out, that's what the toe of the slope is, and gravity pushes all that sediment down to that lowest point. So if you can put some structure in place to control erosion at the toe, it can really help to control that erosion. If you have vegetation that starts to take hold and the roots of the, of the plants will stabilize the sand. So what we first recommended here was placing larger fieldstone, natural fieldstone, but rock riprap right along the toe, and going out was the usual to the site. We talked about a softer approach, because we know this is a public use area, it's a beloved spot, people go for, for sanctuary, for their kids to come down and swim in the, you know, river. People can hunt and fish and use the site, so it's a very treasured area within the city and we understand that. So what we went with as an alternative approach is shown on the screen and also in front of you are these coconut logs, they're biologs. It's this coir and coconut material that's wrapped in, into a log shape, that can be anywhere between twelve inches in diameter up to twenty inches in diameter, and they're about ten feet long. And what we're proposing to do is put those right at the toe of that slope again, so controlling erosion down at the toe. Through the blue area on the plans, we wouldn't do anything there on the upper edge. We have proposed to put in a terrace of sorts at the, kind of halfway to two thirty, really down the bank. Again, if you have people running down that area, you're actually going to form a gully if you concentrate the traffic into that smaller area. So we would like to put a strip of these logs up and around and really control the whole, the whole toe of the bank. Over time, with those logs in place, I actually think they will enhance the site, you'll control erosion, but with them being sixteen inches in diameter, that actually serves as a nice resting area, so if parents are down there with their kids, that can serve as a natural bench for them. Kids can jump in the water, people can rest and look at the river. And it's a natural alternative. We would be doing the plantings in that blue area, so again, besides the biologs, there'd be nothing else in that area. We still want people to enjoy the streambank. But then along the toe, we would be planting some shrubs, dune grass, other plants that are very drought tolerant, because we know we're not going to be able to go down there and actively irrigate. But the roots from those plants are really going to help to, to control erosion and stabilize the streambank. If you look in the upper left corner of this, this part of the drawing, there's two, two shoots or gullies that have formed, and there's no vegetation there, and you're starting to have that material loop down towards the river, whereas the areas that are well vegetated, though they're stable, they remain stable over time. So we'd like to get vegetation on the bank, because that'll offer a sustainable long-term solution to erosion control. Put the biologs at the toe, that'll help to expedite that process, that'll stabilize the soil above the logs and a lot of vegetation if they hold. If you look in the lower left-hand corner, there's actually a tree that we'd like to place in that area. When I was out on the site with Steve, I noticed that there were some turtle eggs on that left-hand side of the bank. So these sandy areas, reptiles and amphibians like to nest in them, like to bask on them, since they're cold-blooded, they need to, they don't have sunlight, exposure to the sun, so they can warm themselves. So there's a stump that exists there, and we'd like to take anything from this stump over to the left, so that would be downstream, and actually make that a natural refuge area for reptiles and amphibians. Putting these biologs in place can actually be a barrier to them, if they're trying to come up and nest. They'll start to walk up the biologs, they can't get over the log, and you're actually doing, in that case, more harm than good. So we don't want to exclude them from using this bank. If that area on the left-hand side is planted in with vegetation, that gives them cover from prey, so they can hide and camouflage themselves. We're putting a log in place there that allows them natural material that they can climb onto, and they can use different branches to get up into the bank. Having that log and the top of the tree in place there, that gives them a nice basking habitat when they get out and get sunlight. And even if people do come down and get into the planted area, that gives them some refuge out in that log, where they can get away from, from people, they'll become the spirit. I think, yeah, you know, we've got another page here, page five, that really just shows more of a cross-sectional view. One thing to note, we are aware that there's, if you look at the bank as a whole, there's two property owners. We've made it very clear in the plans and all things in the document, that the work would only be proposed on City of Alpena property. There is a landowner upstream, but this is, the scope of this work is just for work on the City of Alpena property. So that fence line, it's our standing at that some property line, so the work would only be downstream of that fence line, there would be nothing on the other side of the fence. Looking at this photo, it really shows a lot of the same things, there's a black line across, that's the ordinary high-water mark, so over time, when you have rain events or drought, that water level is going to fluctuate, but during a larger storm event, that would be your ordinary high water. We can look at that. There's actually really a hummock or a kind of a drop-off right there that provides a natural placement for these biologs. So the, the bank goes down at a gradual slope, and then right at the edge, there's about a foot drop-off, and then you're down into the water. So placing those biologs right on the interface between water and land, that really helps to stabilize the bank, flatten out that surface, and it provides a terraced area where fishermen can actually go out and install cast out there, there not, there won't be any obstructions, people can still enjoy the view. So the, the hope with this project is really to, to marry the two ideas of allowing people to continue to use the bank here, but employ some erosion control measures so that their children and people for, people in the future can continue to enjoy this bank just like everybody else has.
I guess, oh, there's still my two cents, and we did meet before the meeting, Sam and Steve and I, because I did have some reservations regarding what was proposed, because it has been kind of a beach area for the community and especially the younger people for, for many, many years. As he explained it further of how the logs are basically embedded down in and then backfill, and as the sand does come down, it's going to fill up right up to the top and probably eventually go over the top of the logs anyways. My suggestions were, were fairly limited. One, on the, the tree, the dead tree, the dead tree that circled there is no longer there because the cemetery crew, I think it was, removed it, along with a lot of others, so it isn't there to be used. But I did say, if this is, the go-ahead is given by council, I'm sure we can find another dead tree without too much problem within the city, that, that they can use or at least a part of it to use there. My other suggestion, if you look at that, the other slide where it's kind of straight on, is off on the left, you know, you, what you see up just to the left of the blue is a path where people have been going down, and there's another one off on the, closer to the left edge. And those are going to be like I've seen on many dune, where they simply are, people use them and they do erode. We even see it, you can see it also on, at Island Park, and where the wildlife sanctuaries tried to avert that by actually putting brush across those areas to try to keep people from walking down. And they have planted grasses and that in other areas, once they barricaded them, to try to preserve and reduce the erosion. Certainly those areas probably need to be planted, and, and so that they are eliminated as access points. And if you look at the overhead, you know, the aerial view, there really isn't a need to access the site from over there. I'm not really sure why people do, but, but they have been. My only suggestion was on that left side is from the, the top left-hand corner of the blue, is if we angled, instead of taking that entire area and planting it, so that all we have is this fifteen-foot funnel, is that we taper it, angle it, and plant those steepest areas with, whether it's dune grass, whatever they suggest and recommend, and maybe some larger shrubs in those two openings. And then we see how that works. If we find it isn't working that well, we can always add plantings, additional dune grass, at a later date on down the slope. And kind of the same on the right side, is going from, again, the top right-hand corner, the blue area, and really angling right down along there, and again, there is vegetation in there, but it's pretty sparse. Infill there, put in additional vegetation, and then again, a C. If we, if it needs to be filled more, planted more, then we can do that at a later date, but at least leave a little more of the, of the sand area. And where the notch is, I wasn't sure how that worked, but I do now understand that by backing it up, what it does is it leaves an area then that's flatter by the water, and going in the water. Now, will somebody be able to, I've heard people would just kind of roll down the hill into the water. Well, if they do, they do fall off a one-foot rise and then fall in the water, which may be unpleasant anyways. Obviously, they're not going to do that with those logs there, but I don't think it's really going to be a hindrance for people. And as we discussed it, at least I became a little more comfortable, at least with the, my suggested modifications, and that it's worth a try. They seem to be, the logs anchored well, so they're not going to be something that's going to be moved easily by anybody. By the way, Sam described them, because I think you said they're about ten feet long?
Yeah, they're...
And we're talking sixteen-inch diameter, so they're a pretty good size.
With it, with one, you know, when we order it from the manufacturer and then replacing it, usually two of our crew can handle it themselves. As soon as they get wet, they are anchored. So, so these, these ones in the middle where it says public use area, I sincerely hope the water doesn't get up that high. So those ones are going to stay dry, they will be secured to the bank, but especially these along that interface between the land and water, we'd like to place those down into the water, secure those, and then actively plant, put willow stakes and other shrub material in those, so that they do become part of the bank, versus just leaving them be, because they will fill in the sand behind them, but they always are going to be darker brown color in the sand, so if you're floating by on a float or you're, you know, out in the wildlife sanctuary, it will look a little bit different. But if you plant in those, that'll help to cover in, covering the biologs.
I, um, down there yesterday, it had been quite some time since I had been in that area, but spent a significant amount of time there when I was younger. And I, honestly, then I had no idea that, that you were involved in this project at all. I guess I'm going to be that guy that doesn't understand. It's, it's, looks as though it's still well-used, there's tracks all over in the sand, so I just assume that younger people are still doing the same swimming activities that I was doing when I was young. And I'm just not convinced, I guess, that anything needs to be done, and it just seems like, to me, like it's, everything will be maybe a bit of a hindrance, even though Greg was talking about, you know, how it will still work. But I just, I, if it looked like it was eroding to the point where there was some, I mean, I, I guess my question, my only question might be, what, what's your motivation to do this? Is it, are we losing so much sand into the river, or is that sand ending up somewhere else that we should be concerned about, or?
Yeah, if you look at, that's okay.
I mean, I saw the, right before the water, there is about, there's about nine inches where the sand goes down, and then it drops about, I don't know, maybe less than nine inches. So that, you were calling that the high-water mark? And I guess I was kind of looking for maybe some erosion issues, or some issues that we should really be concentrating on, but I didn't see them, so I don't know if...
So it's, it can be a little bit difficult to, to look at a site and just say, okay, it's an open sandy bank, it's been that way for, for quite some time, it looks the same as it did on a, say, aerial photo from ten years ago, I think it's okay. Because I've done that before, and there are little clues out there that, you know, maybe if you can't physically see the sand rolling out into the river, they are losing material there. If you look at the first page of the designs, and moving downstream, you've got the baggy stream bridge on the left-hand side of the photo, you follow the river down, then we got this sandy area, this circle in yellow. Right around the corner there, this is certainly not all material coming from the bank, I don't want to make that a point of confusion. But around the corner here, you do have material that the river is depositing in this wider area, and some of that material can be coming from this sandy exposed streambank. You know, obviously you have a wider area here with lots of different oxbows, so it's not treated as a traditional river system, where it's a, you know, easier description of sediments leaving and sediments coming in being filled back in. But around the corner here from the site, you do have material that's being deposited into the river and forming an island in this area, and I'm sure that some of that material is coming from the sand bank. If you look at, well, you can't, the right-hand side, we're on page two now, this right-hand photo, I was standing at the top of the bank, looking out towards the river, right-hand side, we have some vegetation, left-hand side, we have some vegetation, and it's not very, very visible, but there is a more pool, a bowl shape that comes down where people are accessing.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And then if you look at, probably the fifth page here, I've covered it up with some of the notes, but on that far side of the bank, you can stand on the bank and be up to your hips or even probably your neck if you're looking at the vegetation on the side. So the areas that are vegetated, that sand and soil is staying in place, the areas that are not vegetated, that soil is being lost over time. Some of it is being redeposited in less steep areas, but as I understand, there's a pretty deep hole right there where the natural channel is for the river, that's probably why people like to fish there. You're starting to fill that hole with, with all of this sand. So it's, it's certainly not a process that's happening overnight, but if you have, you know, foot traffic that's through there, larger storm events, that soil that's exposed, it is going to be pulled down towards the river and then start to fill in that area. And it can be looked at, so you could just say that's fine.
Sam, you know, I, I think you had a pretty good sense in your presentation that you might be concerned about the, the usage and the history and that, but are you flexible at all about widening the, the public use space in the final plan?
Certainly, I think on page four, I have given some approximate distances at the bottom of the page there, so I said there's a scrub pattern in the area, it'd be approximately ten feet, biologs of thirty feet, public use at the bottom would be fifteen feet, and then twenty-five feet over on the right-hand side. And with that twenty-five feet and the thirty feet, we were just drawing down from notable landmarks of vegetation that are already there. So on the left side, you've got a shrub that's, that's there already. My thought when I go to a project site is always to listen to what nature is trying to tell me. So if there's shrubs that are growing there, then people aren't trampling it, there's a reason that it, that it's going to be there. So I think at the top, we're, we're pretty constricted on what, what's available there. But then once you move down, we could widen that out. You know, from our standpoint, we are trying to bridge the gap between allowing the public to use this area while still trying to control as much of the erosion as we can. So the further out we start to have access along the bank, the closer it's going to be to what, what's there now, it's just an open exposed bank where there's no vegetation. So, you know, we can't really guarantee that we're going to have the success that, that we want if we start to open up that public use area more.
The type of vegetation that you would use in the sandy area, that's probably not conducive to people using it later on, right? It's not like going to be grass that you can walk on or sit on, you would have more rugged terrain or rugged vegetation, I guess?
Yeah, that's correct. And anything we plant is going to be native vegetation, even if you go to some of the greenhouses now, they sell invasive species unknowingly. But we have ecologists on staff, our restoration crew does quite a few of these projects every year, so we do have plants that we can put in sandy areas, and we know that they're native to the area. We can also go out on site and look and see what's growing there now, because not all sandy banks are equal, so there are different reasons for plants growing and not growing. But yes, the, the hope would be that we plant these, these areas off to the side, and we would like to put up some temporary signs in those areas, what a vegetation establishes that says, "Streambank stabilization in process, please stay off of fragile soil." And the hope is that these would then become... And the hope is that these would then become relatively huge areas where people aren't using, using that area as much. And even up on the, the right-hand side on this, uh, this part of the plant, you've got a couple of different oak trees and some shrubs that are coming in nicely, and the plant density there is enough to control that erosion, but if someone still wanted to sit next to one of the trees or get some shade or something like that, they can still do that. You know, vegetation won't be so thick that people will be able to use that area, it's just the same as if you're in the, uh, do ecosystem, it's like every time you walk over that doing grass, you're kicking a little bit more sand down, it covers the, the water.
I'm sorry, I just, yeah, it's, um... Yeah, I'm just having a little bit of trouble get, I guess, wrapping my hands around it. Um, I understand where you're coming from, I truly do. But, and I, and all I have to go by, by what our usage is and what the usage is in that area, are the tracks that you not only see on the photo, the photo is relatively recent, I would assume, because it's, that's exactly what I saw when I went down there last night. And so I'm looking at the tracks and I'm saying, this is still really heavily used by the public. That doesn't always mean that we shouldn't save it from eroding itself, I'm not saying that we should not save it because people are using it, but, um, but it's some of the, it's better, it's better sand and beach than we have at some of our lake locations, to be honest with you, um, and so I...
And it's sand.
I guess...
Sands porous.
It's sand. I guess I'm just not convinced, um, that it's, um, that all of this that you're asking is, or saying is in your project is necessary, but I'm not the professional either, you are, so I, I, I'm uncomfortable challenging you on that, I'm really not, I'm just, all I'm...
Challenging, that'd be more fun.
So I'm, so I'm not really, please don't take it as a ch- me challenging your, what you know, um, but I'm just looking for, maybe to know a little bit more about who, who is using it and, um, and is it still well-used, and is it an issue? Don, do you know? I'll invite you to input if you'd like.
As a matter of fact, um, I cruise up and down the river all the time on my, my boom boat, man.
After work.
What, me?
After work.
No, I'm, yeah, but the last time we went through there, my mother-in-law was here, was, um, the weekend, and there was probably fifteen people on that bank, and they're all over that place you're talking about playing, I'm just telling you. My grandson swims there, his kids, there's another spot on the, you know, on the other side of the bend where they got a rope swing, if you walk the bike paths, you see that, that had some kids. But another thing that was there the, the last time we went by was four kayaks from the livery tied up there, and two more were coming across from the sandy island that's in the middle of that, out in the oxbow, you know, coming that back with no way you could through there, tied in. But there was people, there was a couple younger gals that were just laying out sunbathing, fifteen, twenty feet apart, there was one family with a couple kids down at the bottom, uh, you know, throwing sand around, doing what the kids do. From my soil erosion standpoint, it's on the, it's, it's not on the outside of the bend where erosion from river flow, like, you know, during the spring on oxbow, that's the least affected area of that bend of the river. What looks like a lot of stuff deposited around the corner from that is actually not so much sand, that's actually silt and loam that's filled up with cattails and all that kind of junk, 'cause I ducked on it there forty years ago, I, I walked as far as you can, and I'm very familiar with the area, and, and I can just say, if we limit that to a fifteen-foot strip, that fifteen-foot strip's gonna look like this, for one thing, because the foot traffic's all gonna go there if it's restricted that way, and the kids, probably my grandson included, whatever you put in it, they're gonna tear it up, because they're gonna use them, I'm just telling you. And, and I think the erosion that needs to be stopped is from the foot traffic pushing the sand down. Right immediately, if you keep coming off into the water, you get out maybe seven feet from shore, you're probably in eight-foot deep, it stays about that deep, then it gets to be about ten. And I can honestly say that twenty years ago, that was probably twelve feet. So some of it's gonna be from that sand, and some of it's gonna just be from silt and sediment, that's, you know, settles out as, as rivers do, but, um, there's, it's pretty heavily used, you know, a lot of people like it, 'cause even though for a small area, there's a lot of people, it's not like going to Thompson on a hot summer day. So, you know, I've seen mothers with kids there, and, you know, it's not too far of a walk, push a stroll and go down there, but I think the challenge gonna be getting something to go there. So I don't know if there's more of a terrorist effect that could happen from the water if you move up with those logs that you're talking about, 'cause I'm just telling you, that sand's gonna, when you're all done with this project, three years from now, it's gonna look just like that, except for the logs that are down the bottom, 'cause that's how crazy it is.
Yeah, 'cause there's, those where you have the, where you have the one, um, where the, where it kind of goes up to the left of the blue area, that's, um, you know, that's a path that leads, there's a couple of those, and those are paths that lead up into this other area, you can kind of see them on that sheet, so, um, there's paths that lead to other areas, and I kind of, I kind of, I agree with Don in the sense that I can't even imagine what you would put up that would keep people from, from using those, um, using those while you're waiting for them to grow, but that's, I guess, not for me to say, but, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's a great place, it's just a great place, so I, I, I guess I'm just not really sure how much I would wanna approve for, for you to do. But there again, I guess my struggle is, is that I really don't, you know, I'm not a professional at this, I don't wanna be the guy that, all this is in the river.
Well, I guess, you know...
So it's kind of, yeah.
A comment on that, I might know a thing or two about the erosion control projects, but I'm not a professional on being part of this community and part of the city. So I, I think the larger discussion here is, can we do something to control erosion? But before that is, how can we continue to make this a place that people can enjoy? Um, so one option with that is to, uh, proceed with the plans and put them into a permit with the DQ, 'cause that has to happen. Those permits are good for five years, there's no reason why, we're not obligated to do any of that work, we can get a permit and sit on that for five years, we don't have to do the rest. And I, we could just start with doing plantings in the upper areas and, you know, not worry about the biologs. But with that permit in place and approved, if we decide at some point to put those biologs in, then the permit's approved, we've gotten the approval from the city, then it's just a phone call to me or someone else at Huron Pines and say, yeah, can you guys come and put those biologs in next week? Whereas if we adjust the plans now, we'd have to go through the whole permitting process again, that takes time. So we can certainly move forward with this, but, um, take the project in stages, I guess, is what I'm suggesting. And it seems like the, the planting is, is not necessarily that large of an issue, it's more what it looks like to some folks that are blocking off the, the beach access there.
And you can't, that's private property to the right of that fence in, in the picture?
Yeah.
You can't deal with private property?
We certainly can, uh, we just haven't gotten a, uh, official word on who owns the property.
Okay.
So once we do identify the, the landowner, we can approach them, and it would be excellent to say, hey, look what we did up with the city, we can make your property look the same way. And actually, um, you know, probably what'll happen is if we do all of this, their property will get trespassed on more and can be done further.
Well, yeah, and that's a concern as well, and that can kind of be a concern for us, I guess, if we start telling everybody that's going to the, to the public use area that they can't anymore, of course they're gonna go, I mean, 'cause all, there isn't even a gate there, um, so, and, and it's pre- fairly obvious that people are already going over there. So I would, you know, I, there's a bit of a concern about that as well, if we, um, you know, because whoever owns that property, I don't know who owns that property, but I doubt that they're standing out there all the time, that, um, they're gonna have no, you know, control, and then that, and then, and then that, their, that area will end up being where everybody runs and swims and, and things, so, which, which I guess makes me a little bit even more apprehensive about doing anything with ours. That's just me, I don't know how you guys feel about it, I've been the one yapper in here, but...
Well, you know, hopefully, Sam, we don't, I want you to, to get the wrong idea, and we certainly wanna preserve our natural resources. I know, you know, that you know what you're talking about, and, and Huron Pines has got a good rep, but it is a, it's a highly popular place, it's a tough sell. My kids told me, come here and vote no. And so, you know, people are aware of it, it's, it's still used pretty heavily, so it's, it's tough. You know, I certainly kind of like your idea of maybe trying to, to take it a piece at a time and see if we can't control the top vegetation first, and, um, you know, as far as narrowing it to, to what's initially on here, that's just gonna be too tough of a sell, I think, for, for us, and, um, but certainly, I, I think if we can meet you halfway and find a way to try to control the erosion and still leave it pretty, pretty accessible for the public, uh, everybody's gonna win, and, uh, the city inspector spoke, and I had that concern before, you're gonna put all this time and effort into it, and, and we're gonna use it anyway.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'd hate to see you guys go through that and, and not get the result either, so, maybe we can look at taking it a piece at a time and seeing what we can make of work with you. This is a pretty, pretty big jump for at least me, and it sounds like maybe the mayor as well, so I don't know, but, um, it might do sense.
And just to follow up on that, um, these biologs that are placed are, are supposed to be used and abused, for lack of a better term, they're not, um, fragile. So, uh, the thought of placing those and then not allowing people to access that, that's not the intent at all. Um, I would be more worried about putting plantings in and then having those trampled and not grow, but a great reason to put these biologs in is that they can stabilize the toe, people can jump off of them, people can sit on them, people can run over top of them, and yet they still hold that, that sand back, so, you know, and, and going out to the site a couple of times and going through different design options, we look at the biologs as the best option, again, to address the natural resource concern, but then also keep the slope concerns in mind of continued use of the area. I like, uh, Greg's idea of angling the, the plantings, so you could leave more exposed sand higher up the bank, so maybe the, the blue area takes more of the form of a, of a triangle, um, you know, keep that fifteen-foot wide slot at the top, which is, that's been formed by people, that's always been there, and I'm assuming it hasn't, um, grown a whole lot over time, 'cause you have plants that are growing on either side. But keep that as it is, and then from there, um, move out down towards the water, plant those upper areas, I really would like to cut off those couple of, of other access points, um, because you're not getting a lot of erosion through there, but, uh, we're certainly open to doing it a different way if we can, if we move forward on, on the project.
Now, if we did widen the beach area, do you think the biologs would still be effective? Or maybe just not as effective?
Yeah, I mean, i- if you didn't have the biologs there, I really don't think the plantings are gonna do a whole lot. In all the projects that we go through, the, the absolute first thing to do is to stabilize the base of the slope or the toe of the slope. To be perfectly honest, you can throw brush everywhere, put in as many plantings as you want, but gravity's always gonna be there, and it's gonna pull everything down, so if you don't do anything at the toe of the slope, you really are, it, it wouldn't be a, a good investment of time or, or resources or funds. So, um, that was the, the motivation behind putting those logs in. You know, another option would be to take out the middle part, so in that blue area, I've got three logs thrown on there, could take those out, you are gonna get a gully that forms there, so it probably won't look worse over time. Um, people may not like the, the terrorist effect in the middle, but I, I think that's the most sustainable way to do it, is to allow people to access the area.
Well, I think the logs, it probably doesn't really inhibit the usage as much as the vegetation would, so...
So maybe we could start with, um, those couple of, of other paths on the left-hand side and, and plant, uh, put some plants up there, and then really just work in the upper, upper half of the bank, and then leave the whole lower half open, that would be an option. One of the plans was, um, after we had received approval for the, the project, was to have our crew out there do most of the work, but then also invite anybody from the community and some of the local volunteers that have been involved in these types of projects in the past, have them come out, put the biologs in, put the plants in, that day they'd be able to help out, but the benefit would be that over time, those are gonna be the users that know people in the community, so when there are questions that come up on, why is there a big ground log here, why are there plants here? They can say, oh, actually, we worked with Huron Pines last year to do this project, and we'd really appreciate it if you'd stay in this area where we didn't put plants, because over time, those other plants will be able to grow and stabilize the bank, 'cause it's all part of our planned erosion control project. So that, you know, that's one of the reasons why we do so many volunteer events at Huron Pines, it's not always to, um, get the work done as fast as we can to get as many people out there, it's those long-term sustainable benefits of bolstering that community ownership
I just, you know, that would, you know, if you put the logs down there, and I understand that they're gonna be pretty low, then you're gonna have anybody coming up with a canoe or a kayak that's gonna go on that private property, and I'm a little hesitant to be, 'cause we're gonna be driving people to that private property, um, by doing just about anything there, and I'm just not too thrilled about the fact that I don't even know who that is.
Fletcher.
Fletcher, I think.
Is it Fletcher's?
Whether you do this or not is obviously your call. I don't think, though, we should, the, what affects the decision should be, well, if we do have an erosion issue and we want to resolve it, well, now that may affect the neighbor, well, we have to deal with our property. The neighbor needs to deal with, if they have an issue. If it's, well, we solve our problem, neighbor doesn't, uh, I don't think we should limit ourselves, that's, you know, on that. I mean, uh, we can't help where people go, uh, they can sit and put up there no trespassing signs, and they can do whatever they want on their property to prevent people from going onto it, but, uh, I don't think, any more than if that, that, you know, and this, that property owner did something for themselves, and they said, well, now that's gonna worsen it on ours, because we're not doing anything. It'd be the same effect, and I don't think they should be restricted in terms of what they do either. There, if there is a problem that's, that you look at that you feel is something that needs to be resolved, then we should take the appropriate measures, rather than allowing it to get worse. If we don't feel that it's that serious, or it can be done in stages, whatever the case, then that's how we should act, but it's on the, our interest for our property in preserving it.
Sam, what, what type of time constraints are you under, as far as our approval goes?
Funny that we have available for any of the erosion control works, and it might be the whole project, but that needs to be extended by the end of September.
End up when?
September. And, uh, you know, one of the documents that, uh, need to be approved this evening is the authorization of the permit, and the permit's typically taken in four weeks to, to be approved. But a smaller project like this, probably closer to two weeks, but everybody's busy this time of year.
I, I do understand the issue, I truly do, I've volunteered numerous hours on Island Park, and I care very deeply about what happens to the environment. But I care a lot about people, too, and I, and that place has been like that for two months, twenty-five years that I know of, and others who are from here, um, and have lived here all their lives, they, they could say whether or not it's been longer than that, but I, my, I know my children swim there, all, every one of them, so, um, I struggle with that piece. It's sand. Sand drains. I mean, I, it's not that I think it is, some of it isn't going in the river, I do, I understand that, but, um, how drastic is this?
Yeah, it sounds like the, this has been a part of the community for quite some time, and it doesn't seem like it's changed a whole lot. You know, the intent of doing this project was never to restrict access, that's why we've left a third new path to decide open to the public use, and I understand that if we do something or if we don't do anything, it's gonna be a decision, uh, and so, you know, another option would be to, um, discuss some other alternatives that the council would be comfortable with, having us... council would be comfortable with having us move forward on, but still, you know, a lot of for more use of the area or different methods. If you guys have goals for the site, I can certainly come up with different alternatives. But, you know, it was my understanding this was kind of the best alternative I had thus far of controlling, erosion protecting fragile soil and natural resources, but still allowing people to enjoy the area.
Yeah, it's just a tough sell to me. I'd get beat up pretty bad if I walk out of here. I guess that's sometimes what I think about, not always. But occasionally, that's something I think about, and I guess I just, I just don't see, I just don't see, maybe, I'm just not in favor of doing anything with it. I guess I'll just put that right out there. At least not at this point, and I guess I understand where you're coming from with doing it, doing it in sections or portions, but then I, then I really, then I feel like I've really just kind of lost control of the whole thing, if you understand where I'm coming from. If we approve it, and that's fine, what council wants to do is fine. Just kind of putting you out there where I'm at. Then I just won't know. If one day I'll get a call from somebody that's hollering about the logs, but I won't know that the logs went in, but I guess the logs have to go in. There's no alternative to the logs, and that's one of the things I'm, and I understand where Greg was coming from. We're really not liable for what happens on a neighbor's yard if we're doing something to ours, but, well, people are going to use it for what it's being used for, and they always have been. With kayaks and canoes being even more popular now than they have been in the last 10 years, you're going to see more of that, and that might even make it worse there, I guess. But I guess, like I said, it's been like that since I can't even remember. So I don't know where you guys want to go with that. Michael.
Sam.
He's not much over there. Kind of taking it all in. For me, looking at this, it's like, I'm with Susan, Matt, on the areas. It's been that way forever. I spent some time down there when I was a kid. But restricting the one area is a way to protect the erosion. I get that. Sometimes it seems like you're putting a Band-Aid on a bigger problem if you're not doing anything with the rest of the properties, which we're not proposing on that end of it. I mean, it is a very popular area, always has been, it's always been a place to go.
And the issue for me, the other side of the issue is, once the beach is gone, the beach is gone. Nobody's going to recreate a beach.
What do you guys feel about tabling it? Give Sam an opportunity to look at something that might be more appealing to us, I guess.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to table it and do some more research myself and see what other alternatives that he has up to you, because I agree with Don's aspect, too, that it's on an inner bank, not an outer bank. From what I understand, that's the bigger areas of concern on that end as well. So I definitely would be at least in favor in that, because I'm not in favor, as we sit right now.
Greg, you have any issues with that?
At this point, I leave that up to the council. I mean.
I just mean.
I mean, obviously, it isn't going to probably occur during this funding cycle. I don't know if they'll get, have other funding coming along, and, you know, that will just have to be the case. The very limited amount that could be done would be planting up on those high areas where the, on the left side there where those openings are, just to try to block those, much as we've done on the island. That's not any different than what we've done before, to try to keep that access, you know, people away from that. Some of that could be planted right below that. Yes, you always have the chance, and the likelihood. I've planted a lot of dune grass in previous work, and the difficulty is keeping people off of it. We planted it on the island in areas, but they blockaded both the top and the bottom of worn paths that they didn't want there, and planted them. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. People will still, they'll move the barriers and still go down. It's unfortunate, but.
Yeah, and some of these are just an alternative, alternative way of getting down to the beach area. Some of these lead to other places on the, on the point. So if somebody had been going down there for quite some time, they're just going to keep going down there. I mean, I see the one that's just kind of an alternate area, but the other one, those actually lead to different places on the point. I don't know. I mean, I really appreciate what you guys do with the Thunder Bay River, and I've been to several occasions to see what your projects are, and so I really don't, really not, I'm not wanting to be so negative about your project, I guess, but I'm just trying to be positive about what that place has been for as long as any of us can remember. I don't know, I see, you know, with your time schedule, it's going to be difficult to reappropriate that. Those funds to a different project or anything like that, so I don't know if you guys want to table it and take another look at what we have or go out there with. And I don't want to leave them hanging for two weeks. I guess my question in tabling it is, where would we go with it from there? I mean, what's your intentions to go out and see what you might be able to do, or what you'd agree to do and whatnot?
At least give him opportunity to present. We voted on tonight we're going to kill it. I mean, I can tell by sitting here, so, you know, I guess the intention is, if we tabled it, if you were interested, to give you the opportunity to kind of give us Plan B. I guess that's, probably should get your input on that.
And it seems like the issue is not the implementation of the project, but rather the effect that it'll have on the community. So I don't think, I don't think going out there another two weeks to look at my whole alternatives, you're still going to have to save people in the community and the potential negative effect that we're, protection that could occur from the project. So to be perfectly honest, I don't think an extra two weeks is going to, I'd rather spend that time looking at a different project site than coming up with different alternatives here.
Are we anywhere, I know, I know it's, I mean, it's sort of the same subject, but a different subject. I'm just going to ask real quick. Rich, you can just yes or no me. How close we are? Are we close to getting any information from the study of what's, what's depositing on our beach?
Should, I expect that by now, they were working, they had some people on vacation, they were finalizing their report and their study, and I expected to have it before this time. I met you when you sent us an email today, and I ran on time to be there.
And that's fine, and I didn't mean to target you like that, but that's, but, but that's erosion I'm concerned with. And I'm only, I'm only calling it erosion because it's coming from somewhere else and it's being deposited there, so that's my elementary view of what erosion is. That's where I'm focusing. That would be fantastic if we could figure that out and partner with you guys. My expectation would be that we would partner with you guys at some point, if it's coming from the river, if it's not. But, yeah, I just, this is just tough for me.
I guess I'll leave the council with one more comment on the project, is that Huron Pines is always actively seeking projects, and we feel very proactive in abating any sort of resource concern before it becomes a larger issue. We've done that with our invasive species program along the coast with grain minis treatment. And so for many years, we've actively treated the coast to remove grain minis as an invasive plant, whereas in other parts of the state have not done that. And now it's a multimillion-dollar problem that probably will never be solved. And so I'm not saying that this is a bad, ugly problem, but this is a very proactive time to work on this project. And speaking with the city and the multiple people that I encountered, both doing measurements for this and chronic designs, I told them what we were going to do, or what we were proposing to do, and they said, oh, that sounds like a good idea. I don't think anyone's ever done anything there before. So I don't really think it's a fear of changing what's there already. I think it's more maybe that we're on the forefront of trying to do something there. And we also have the methods at Huron Pines to communicate about why we're doing this project, and I feel we're very effective in doing that. I've seen many of the council members looking into newsletters that we put out every quarter. We write to the local city papers and publications, or in electronic newsletters. So we have methods of communicating why we're doing the project, who the partners are, and again, getting out in front of those questions of, why was my beach destroyed? Because I don't see us doing that at all.
We need to vote either way, Greg, Karen.
We don't have to take action either.
You're going to table it? Is that what you'd like to vote on?
I'm still willing.
I didn't sound like that was probably a feasible option.
If you take no action, we can just say, I mean, he's asking for action, aren't you?
You don't have to take action. If nobody makes a motion, then it dies. It just dies there, but. I mean, I would almost feel like he's been here, he's worked it up, he probably wants a vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to move on to a different site to use the funding app, which is unfortunate, but, you know, in reality, we're six, seven weeks away from having to use it, so every day is precious at this point. So we have other sites on our list. Like I said, we've done inventory of the entire river, and we picked this one as the first one to go after. So it's unfortunate that it sounds like it won't be happening, but we do have other options.
Okay, well, I'll move to allow the Huron Pines proposal for erosion control as presented.
To hear it as presented?
To allow it as presented.
So you're approving it?
I'm just making the motion so we can vote on it.
Can I, before you do that, well, I guess, I just happened to see in here, in your, it's not quite the same because they're not using logs, but you can see how along a shoreline they have terraced it and still leaving, and this was just plank, posts and planks, you know, womanized, but it's a similar type of thing here that they did along a, I don't know if that's, that looks like a lake, but.
Greg, even, you know, in this, in this area, you don't have a high flow of, you know, it's more of the erosion occurrence and flow traffic going down your bank versus the river transporting logs.
The only reason I point it out is just so the other was, you know, that schematic of what they would do, at least this gives a little, an actual picture of something somewhat similar, whether that makes any difference. I apologize for interrupting, but I just happened to see it.
No, that's fine, because we're still in the discussion.
It's not like we can't come crawling back to him someday.
So we have a motion to approve the proposal as presented?
You didn't get a second.
Do we have a second? Sam, okay. Johnson?
No.
Nielsen?
No.
Nowak?
No.
Sexton?
No.
Olagora?
No.
Sexton, don't forget us later.
Thanks for, thanks for the, I appreciate it. So I want to finish business. Next up, new business, Marina Underground Fuel Tank Monitor Replacement.
No. While we're in the.
During that frame of mind. In June of this year, the annual underground storage tank inspection was performed at the municipal Marina by the State Bureau of Fire Service, the Storage Tank Division. One of the violations with the automatic tank gauge was inoperant and had been for a few years. The ATG automatic tank gauge monitors the space between the double walls of the two 6,000-gallon fuel tanks buried underground and immediately detects any leakage due to the space so that the tanks can be repaired, drained, or whatever you have to do in getting into the ground or into the water. The existing ATG we have is no longer manufactured and cannot be repaired. I'm assuming it was put in at the same time the Marina was done back to eight, five, three, six, you know, the whole time. But it hasn't worked ever since I've been harvesting it. Now, currently, it's not a requirement to have a working ATG, as long as there is a minimum of monthly monitoring of the tank product levels by qualified personnel. As Marina's not open all winter, there's nobody down there to take those readings. And it's not just like putting a stick and pointing, oh, okay, 300 gallons or whatever. There's a mathematical equation, temperature, a certain way to do it. The state's been fairly lenient so far, because when it does that product, and a lot of products, they're down there, somebody's there all, all the time. Well, we requested proposals for the installation of a new ATG at the Marina from two companies that are routinely in Marina servicing local gas station equipment. And it didn't go up to regular bids, you know, statewide, because there's only two companies in the state of Michigan that have the franchise to sell the particular equipment we were looking for, which was that Burner Root model that does all the good stuff and tells you how much is in you all the time. So it's only R.W. Mercer or Oscar W. Larson in Michigan that can sell those products. Both of them also are, do the bulk of northern Michigan. They both have offices in Galway. There was another company in SAG and all that didn't bother with, because they sell a totally different product. And based on me talking with other harbor masters and other gas station owners, that system that we got the quotes on seems to be a real nice system for the price that it costs. I mean, you can expand it if you were to put in another tank for some reason, you can do it before then. But anyway, I add the bids to the memo, and the prices are quoted below. The new system will include overflow alarms, monitor the space between the tanks, compute existing inventory, and be accessible remotely via internet. This will greatly streamline reporting for fuel sales and immediately notify us in case of failure. As these tanks are only a few feet from the waters of Thunder Bay, it is environmentally responsible to do. R.W. Mercer's bid was $10,154, Oscar W. Larson was $16,610. Now, R.W. Mercer is also the company that currently performs our annual leak testing down at the Marina, and anytime I need any servicing on pump equipment or something we can't take care of ourselves, they're the company that does that also, so they're familiar with the setup. They included, Oscar Larson Company included additional work in their bid of $3,579 to replace some electroconduit, put new concrete manholes in and two adapters that were not included in the bid from R.W. Mercer. After I subtracted this amount from their bid, they were still higher by $2,877 than Mercer was. I spoke with Doug Gilia from R.W. Mercer, and he did not feel that the extra items would be needed, and his company has been doing the annual testing, as I said, of this stuff, and they're very familiar with the system. Anyway, I included an additional $1,846 in the purchase order for a total of $12,000, just in case there's any additional cost for any unforeseen items. The money for this project will come from the CIP light replacement line item for the Marina this year, and the light will be pushed ahead or kicked down the road. And I talked to the city engineer, and he was in concurrent with us. Their first staff would recommend council approval to accept the bid from R.W. Mercer, the amount of $10,154, install the new automatic tank gauge.
We still have adequate lighting down there, right?
Yeah.
Which is upgrades.
Energy upgrade, not just replacing the light.
We can't, since we have $18,000 budgeted for lighting, and if this, if there are no extras, it's just like 10 and a half, or just over 10, we still will have, you know, $7,000 to $8,000, which, in talking with Rich, they can, we could either just replace the heads at this point, the intent to go to LED lighting, and then replace the poles, take the heads off, replace the poles at a later date, or just replace lesser number, I think you said you could probably get six or seven?
Probably five, five to six.
Five to six, you know, lights replaced, and we take those that we feel will be most important, and we finish up the others at a later time. It's not that any of them are on the verge of falling over, that there's any crisis or anything. It was simply part of beginning that process of replacing and putting in LEDs, and then at the time, those are quite old, what'd you say, concrete pole?
The pedestrian light posts along the seasonal package, on the concrete light poles.
And they're replacing those. So, yes, we won't have the full amount, but we could still get a fair amount of that work done near shore without having to otherwise dip into the fund balance, which, it isn't a lot of money to go into it. Things are looking much better, but then if we also do that with others and say, well, this isn't much, and this isn't much, pretty soon we dipped quite a bit, and we would just soon not. and this isn't much, pretty soon we dipped quite a bit, and we would just not start that, at least not yet, of doing that. So we feel we can live with paying this and still get at least a portion of the lights that the Marina done, because it only affects the Marina. It's not other lighting. I think there may be other money budgeted for other lighting, but that's outside the Marina.
And, you know, just so council is aware, in this afternoon, when I talked to Greg, I proposed that we actually not kick this project down the road, that we actually go into our general fund, because earlier this year, mayor had brought up, what do we do when we actually have those extra funds, what automatically starts? I know it's unusual, and some would think it was unusual for me to kind of propose that, but I think we've kicked a lot of projects down the road. And when I saw the energy optimization, replacing some of the lights, I didn't want to kick something down the road that was actually going to save city money in the long run. And so that's why I asked the question, and then they were kind enough to go through and understand exactly what we could do. And if we can get a pretty significant, significant amount of this project done, and while we have to do this other gauge projects as well. So just to let council know exactly where I was on that. And I think there are, there may be some projects that come down here. Instead of replacing one with the other, this may be something that we seriously need to look at, because we've done that for so many years. Just a thought, I thought it was a good opportunity to have a discussion on that, what we could do. And maybe this isn't that project, but I thought I'd at least bring it to the forefront.
Well, I think that's a bigger conversation we need to have in the immediate future, as far as how we're going to prioritize what we want to do with the fund balance, so.
Yep. And that is all part of the big picture. I agree. Any other questions for Don?
Thanks, Don.
Will we go forward with the Marina Underground Fuel Tank Monitor Replacement as presented by the city building official?
Second.
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
You a mind reader or something tonight, Rich?
I'm not going to be changing out life. I have final instructions to do.
Michigan Department of Transportation Trunkland Maintenance Contract Number 2014-0266.
Basically, the city of Alpine provides contracted maintenance services to US 23 and M32 trunkload sections within the city. We do it via a five-year contract. That contract is set to expire September 30th of this year. Michigan Department of Transportation has sent us a new contract to provide that service. Same contract language, same rates. Everything is basically the same as it was before. They cleaned up some language, but it was minor in nature. So it's my recommendation, the city engineer, the council approve the proposed maintenance contract, number 2014-0266, between the city of Alpine and Michigan Department of Transportation for the period running September 30th through September 30th of 2019. This approval should be done by resolution, enlist mayor and city clerk to execute this contract on behalf of the city. And Karen will write up the resolution typically after the meeting and get it to us, so that we can include it with the contract.
The only concern I got, Rich, and I'm assuming you're comfortable with it, the rates that they're paying is such, more than enough to cover the expenses that you've been seeing with the added costs the city's had over the last few years with maintaining that section of roadway.
Yeah, basically, the way it works is, if I send, if I send a plow truck out there, we charge them at the state rate per hour for the truck, and then they reimburse us at that rate. We send them our union contract, so they reimburse us for all of our labor. If we use salt, they reimburse us for the cost of salt, plus a 5% handling charge for that salt. Then on top of that, we typically get, it varies depending on the dollar amount of the contract, we work from 7% to, I think, 11%. Obviously, the bigger the contract amount, the lower the percentage. As far as overhead, that we get paid by the state. So we get, we get reimbursed for all of our costs, plus that 5% materials for handling, then our overhead, which pays for Vicki's time to generate, Vicki and Tammy to generate the report, Karen to do her part of it, and students submitted. So, I mean, we're basically reimbursed if the state keeps us whole. Especially this last year, we spent a lot more on snow piling. The state has guaranteed to keep us whole on that, so we will not lose money.
We can't say no, anyway, right?
We can, but then you'll see orange trucks in here piling state trunk lines, and we will lose, I don't remember how much we budget in state trunk line maintenance, but basically our revenues match our expenses in that, in that line item.
I move the approved contract, 2014-266, with the M dot, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign, and the city's behind it.
Second.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
I'm going to be adjourned.
Second.
You are watching All About Elpino.